Everybody and thank you for joining us at this regular meeting of the Madera City Council, a special meeting of the Madera City Council as the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency. Today is Wednesday, July 1st, 6:00 PM. And this meeting will be conducted pursuant to provisions of the Governor's Executive Order which suspends certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act. The City Council meeting will be livestreamed through the city's website and members of the public may participate in the meeting remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833 and enter ID number 919-2087-7128, followed by star nine if you wish to speak. With that, I will ask our city clerk to call this meeting to, or excuse me, to, for real call.
Mayor Madeline?
Here.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yeah.
Member Gallegos?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Montes?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Present.
Councilmember Holly?
Present.
Thank you so much, Alicia. Unfortunately, Pastor Barry Bernard cannot be with us this evening to do the invocation. So I'm going to ask if you're able to stand, stand with us and Councilman Donald Holly will lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. O Lord, gracious Father, today we come to say thank you for a day that we have not seen before. My Lord, for the day, pray for someone, pray for those who are hurting, going through some unimaginable circumstances. Pray for those who want their lives to be better and to be free, for those things that they may not be holding back. Even though you may not know them, God knows their situation. So to our city, to our Director Ma, thank you for your coming to our city and be a part of it in our meeting tonight. Lord, as we look out over this ocean, this nation, this love that we have for one another, we ask that you step in and show up and show out, that somebody out there, Lord, will say today, "I care for you, I love you, and I want to help you." In these crying times, Lord, we just give you all the praises. We know that you know everything. There's no mistakes that are being made that you don't know nothing about, Lord. So as we go forward, we pray for our city as they got their situations and for our body as we make decisions, stand with us, be with us, and give us guidance and love. In Christ Jesus' name we say, amen.
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 Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of United States of America and to the Republic for what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Moving on into the approval of the agenda, I will ask my colleagues if there's any changes or additions to this evening's agenda. I will ask our city clerk to read a late distribution announcement.
Mayor, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, members of the public are advised that less than 72 hours prior to this evening's meeting, Item D4 was distributed to the council after the agenda packet was finalized. Members of the public wishing to view or obtain a copy of this item may do so by visiting the City of Madera meeting and agenda page located on our website.
Thank you so much, Alicia. As we move into the, oh, I'm sorry, I will now ask for action on the approval of the agenda with that late distribution announcement.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the agenda with the late distribution.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Rodriguez and seconded by Councilwoman Gallegos to approve the agenda as presented with the late distribution announcement. Favor signified by saying aye.
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 Be opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Just as a reminder, for those who are with us, if you are not speaking, I would ask that you mute the meeting until you're asked to speak or acknowledged. That would help with certain background noises, I appreciate that. Moving on to pub comment, the first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of the comment. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold that comment until the item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until that hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. I will first ask our city clerk if anyone has emailed any public comment to the city councilpubliccomment@madera.gov.
No comments received, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Alicia. And I believe we may have somebody here at City Hall that is on the phone that may have a public comment. Is that correct?
So Mayor, I spoke with the individual and he elected not to speak this evening.
Thank you. With that, I will move on to presentations. Our first presentation is the Department of Public Health update, the COVID-19 update. And we have, I believe we have with us Ms. Boss, the Director of Public Health. She with us this evening?
Yes, Mayor, she is with us and, you know, I believe we may have lost her. She was with us a few minutes ago, I apologize for that. Let me see if I can get ahold of her.
Give it just a brief moment, see if we can get her back quickly. Why don't we move into our second presentation, if that's okay with, with council? It's a bittersweet presentation. We have Director General Ma with us this evening that will be returning home after five years of wonderful, fantastic service here as a sister city, the city of Madera. Your commitment to us and the sister city is been absolutely fantastic, Director General. And as we talked about just a little bit ago, my apologies for not being with you yesterday, but you were in fantastic hands and another great visit here to, to the city of Madera. And we thank you from the bottom of our heart for your very, very generous donation of the masks and the gloves. So we would, we would like to hear from you before we hear from others. So thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor Madeline. It's really my, my, my honor. And the Mayor Protem Santos Garcia, the City Council member Cecilia Gallegos, City Council member Jose Rodriguez, the City Council member Steve Montes, a City Council member Derek Robinson Senior, and the City Council member Donald Holly, the, the city manager Anodo Rodriguez, and the, and clerk Alicia, and the dear citizens of Madera. Good evening. Thank you very, very much for inviting me at tonight's City Council meeting. It's really a great honor and a bittersweet for me to be in, in, in this virtual meeting and to have the chance to thank you all before the end of my service here as the Director General of the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in San Francisco, which represents the government of the Republic of China on Taiwan in the areas of Northern California, State of Nevada, and the State of Utah. Madera City established a sister city relationship with the city of Yilan of Taiwan in year 1994. Over the past 26 years, this close tie has benefited, has benefited the people of both sides through expanded bilateral trade and cultural exchanges. Since the start of my service here in July year 2015, I have been eager to further strengthen Taiwan's relationship with our close friends in Northern California. And the Madera City stands out as one of the cities I feel especially proud to call a sister city. In the course of the enhancing bilateral friendship and the collaborations between us, I'm very grateful to all of, to all mayors, city, city council members, city managers, and staffs of the Madera City Government and the Madera Yilan Sister City Corporation and all citizens of Madera for your great support and the warm friendship. Just yesterday, when I came to Madera to deliver 10,000 pieces surgical masks and other PPEs to your great city on behalf of the people and the government of Taiwan, my colleagues and I received extremely warm hospitality from you. I will never forget this wonderful memory. My dear friends, because of your great support, not only has the sister city relationship between Madera and Yilan grown extensively, but the economic tie between California and Taiwan expanded continually. Last year, the bilateral trade between California and Taiwan reached 26 billion US dollars, which made Taiwan the seventh largest global trading partner to California. And at, at the same time, Taiwan was also the 10th largest export market for California agricultural products with a value of 307 million US dollars, which include the almonds and pistachios from, from Madera, from Madera as well. And we are confident that these mutual beneficial ties between us will only continue to grow in the years to come, especially when Madera returns to normal operation from the COVID-19 pandemic. Here, I want to thank you all again for, for, for your warm friendship and the support. And I hope that you will continue to extend your support to my office, the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in San Francisco and the, and my successor, the new Director General, Scott Lai, to further strengthen Yilan and Madera's close friendship. And lastly, I wish Madera City great success and a timely restoration of economy from the pandemic. And all of you, the best of health and happiness. Thank you very much and have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those very kind words, Director General. And absolutely, I can speak on behalf of the council to let you know that we will continue that partnership and relationship with our sister city. And I think now more than ever, as we're amidst this pandemic, we need to continue that, that relationship and straighten those economic ties. So thank you all very, very much. And speaking of relationships, you've, you've made quite a few relationships outside of City Hall here in the city of Madera. And I see Chris Simonian is with us, a fantastic partner. And Chris, I hate to, I hate to put you on the spot, but I know you have, and the Rotary Club has a longstanding history with our sister city. And so I'll give you this opportunity, if you wish, to maybe say a word or two. And you're on mute, Chris.
Okay, oh, thank you for the opportunity, Andy, I appreciate it. We have really enjoyed our partnership with Yilan and Director General Ma has been a fantastic partner, as has the city of Madera. We appreciate everything that you've done for us, you've been there to support us, the Rotary Club has been there, our board, it's been a great opportunity. Sorry to see Director Ma leave and excited to meet his replacement. We look forward to a long continued fun relationship that we've had.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I also hope that in the, in the future, the, you, the Rotary Club can continue to, to, to visit Yilan in Taiwan. And I will be in Taiwan to personally welcome you.
Well, thank you, I can't wait to be there.
Thank you.
I think it is our turn to go over there, right? They, they visited us last, so I think, I think it's our turn, our turn to go visit there.
Yes, it's our turn again.
That's right.
Go there for the music festival.
Yes, that's right. Councilman Derek Robinson would like to say something.
Okay.
Hello, Director General.
Hello, Councilmember Robinson, how are you?
Yes, yes, I enjoyed my visit to San, South San Francisco to visit, you know, the, oh, what was that, anniversary of Taiwan?
Yeah.
It was a big event. And last January, I, I stopped from the Philippines in, in Taiwan.
Oh, really?
Yes, I was there, I was at airport, I took a picture of.
Great.
Thank you. I wish you luck.
And Taiwan is always keep our door, welcome your, your visitor again.
Thank you. I'll visit again.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman, thank you for your words. Would anyone else like the opportunity to say a few words? Councilman Montes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add a thank you to Director General for his service for the culture exchange. He was, you were always a gracious host and we really do appreciate everything that you did and that, that donation of the, the PPE for us. So thank you very much and you will be missed.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, City Councilman Montes, for your long-term support and the friendship. And especially yesterday, you really extend the great hospitality to us. Thank you.
Thank you for those words, Councilman Montes. Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I too wanted to thank Director General Ma for his presence here at our City Council meeting and also the presence here in a lovely town. Thank you for the service that you're giving here and, and in your quarters that you've been in. And thank you for exchanging that cultural that you brought here to Madera. So thank you again. And again, like you said, it'll be bitter, bittersweet, but thanks again for, for coming out.
Thank you, thank you very much, yeah, thank you. City Council, Councilman Rodriguez, and I still remember the last time when I visited your, your city government, you spent a lot, a lot of time with us. I really appreciated that.
Yes, and I wanted to thank Crystal for that as well. Crystal Kidwell made that happen for us. And again, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend there yesterday, but the, the last year's event, and yes, it was a pleasure to have met you. And, and again, thank you for all the service and the support.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Mayor Protem Garcia would like to say a few words.
I just wanted to say very much, your, your generosity from your country is, it comes to us at a very difficult time for our, our country and as, as well as those around the world, of course, but thinking about us and bringing those gifts of the masks and the gloves yesterday really means a lot to our, our community. And we can guarantee you that this council, the mayor, and all of us will put those items to good use. So thank you very much and we will continue the bonds of friendship.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor Protem Garcia. And thank you for your time yesterday to organize that wonderful event for us. And I also guarantee you that my office will continue to make more efforts to get more PPEs to, to, to Madera in, in, in the near future. Yeah.
Fantastic, thank you, thank you. And, and thank you, Councilman Rodriguez, for, for mentioning Crystal Kidwell. She has been an absolute fantastic part of our sister city relationship. She, as everybody knows, is, is that go-to contact person, making arrangements, working with our service clubs and with City Hall and a number of our partners. And I see that her screen is blacked out, but I believe she's with us. From all of us, Crystal, to you, thank you so very, very much for your hospitality, for your willingness to get involved and to help bridge that gap. Crystal, an opportunity, if you're with us, to say, say a few words.
Okay, I, I don't know how to unblack my vision, so I'm learning. I apologize. I, I couldn't see myself, but I can see the rest of you. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our mayor, our mayor Protem, and all the rest of city councilmen, the wonderful support you guys have provided us throughout the last almost 20-some years to support us and create a meaningful cultural exchange between Taiwan and Madera, especially those children, those youth from Taiwan. We have secured many, many wonderful host family to put those kids over there, gave them the opportunity to learn about American culture. And I'd like to share one of the most touching story through the sister city program. So far, mainly we have done cultural exchange, we haven't really been able to expand to economic. And I wish Director General Ma, when you go, when you go back to Taiwan or with the new Director General, see we can emphasize on the economic exchange. As far as to the cultural exchange, since this was 20-some years ago, for the kids came over, the first few years, they were like 10, 12 years old, now they are 30, 40 years old, some of them already be in the, the professional field, like attorney, teachers. And one of the most touching story I'd like to share with you is one of this kid, he got cancer and when he was the age of 20, he was in the United States and we had host family. And before he died, before he passed away, and he told Director Lee, if you guys remember, he's always gracious, bring whole bunch of talented musicians here to perform for us. His last wish that he made it before he passed away, he said, "I just wish I can come to Madera one more time before I die." But he was so sick, he was not able to. That shows that, 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 that tells us how much love we get, our community has provided to our, the youth from Taiwan. And then Director General Ma, when you go back, you can probably to tell you, to tell the government that, that those youth from Taiwan made a wonderful example, brought the wonderful culture to us and let our community enjoy those wonderful music. I have heard one senior citizen told me, says, "We have provided the best music program to this community she ever participated before." People appreciate it and appreciate the things our little community has done for our residents. And I want to thank you all the council, our mayor, Mayor Protem, all the councilmen, wonderful support, all right, we truly, truly appreciate. And so I think with the, how you say, the enthusiastic invitation from our Director General Ma, and once this COVID is over, I think our next goal is organize another great trip to Taiwan. And the, the next wish we have as a sister city aboard, we wish can bring our children to visit Taiwan to experience Oriental culture. And that's our next big, big goal to our residents in Madera. Thank you so much for everybody's strong support.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, of course, Councilman Holly.
You know, when I first heard them saying and the tribute that they brought, and when I go in there and hit that gong, big old gong bell in there, reminds me of the friendship and the music that they brought to us. Being on this council, it really has made me feel that aside just in America, that we're doing things in other countries. So with you guys, Director and Crystal, you guys are awesome, just keep up the good work, God will bless you for your endurance and I hope we can get to come there. I've been dreaming about it, but I ain't got there yet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Councilman. And as you can see, Director General, there's, there's a lot of love here and, and support for one another. And as Crystal had mentioned, not only the economic impacts, but the cultural impacts. And I truly feel that's what's needed in our world today is to educate ourselves on, on cultures around the world. And Taiwan is no different. And so you have brought that to us and we have learned so much from you and hopefully you can, you can take something back from Madera. And as you mentioned, the, the economic impacts, California is, is the fifth largest economy in the entire world. And obviously here in the central San Joaquin Valley, we're, we're an ag-based community. But there is something special that you will be taking back with you that's not necessarily considered produce. Do you care to share a couple of your gifts that you received yesterday that you'll be taking back with you?
Yes, yes, definitely do. And I would also definitely take back your friendship back to, to, to Yilan, Yilan government. Yes.
Fantastic. And, and do you have, do you have your hat with you by any chance?
Yes.
All right.
And also, also.
And the boots.
Thank you.
That's fantastic, that's fantastic.
And anytime, when, when you, each and every one of you, if you have opportunity to come to Taiwan, no matter it's a business or it's just for, for vacation, please don't hesitate to, to contact me. And I, I would certainly, yeah, would like to, to take you to look around and host the dinner for you.
We, we would love that, absolutely love that. Once again, Director General Ma, thank you. We would love that. Absolutely love that. Once again, Director General Ma, thank you so very, very much. We wish you safe travels, a safe trip home, and we look forward to seeing you again very, very soon.
Thank you, thank you very much again. And I also wish each and every one of you stay safe, healthy, and happy.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Moving on to our next item under presentations, this is the Department of Public Health update. Sorry, Ms. Boss, I think you got cut off there, but I see you're back with us. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I guess I'll start with an update with regards to the data. We are up to a total of 541 cases of COVID from the beginning. That includes 22 new cases today. We have a total of 14 hospitalizations. And I think what's significant about our hospitalizations is the rate at which it's increasing. So, I'm going to talk a little bit more about data and hospitalizations and what's called the monitoring list in just a little bit. Our data dashboard includes lots of great information. We're improving it all the time based on feedback that we're receiving from the public about what information they'd like to have and what makes it easier for them to be able to navigate through what's there. And, oh, great, thank you. Let me just... So, on the left-hand side, as you can see, there are some charts. And there are tabs. On the larger chart that's on the top, you can see tabs that are across the bottom. So, the first one there is hospitalizations. And then, you can see total cases, new cases, and testing. And one of the things that we are trying to do is add some instructions clearly on the charts because people don't realize that with each one of these charts, if you hover your mouse over one of the dots, you can actually get the individual numbers by date. So, all of the data is there that people can look and see. Like, a lot of people see the trend, but what's the specific number where that dot is? Of course, there's cases down below by age group and how many we're monitoring. And then, quick stats are down the middle. One of the things that people wanted to add and we're working on that is how many cases were added today? How many new cases today? And so, we're going to add that probably to that middle column. And then, also on the right-hand side there, you'll see the reporting areas. I believe that I described this in a previous council meeting. But the criteria that we need to use in order to ensure privacy is that each area in which we're reporting data has to have a minimum of 20,000 people in population. So, in order for us to do that effectively across Madera County, it didn't make sense for us to report the city of Madera because it wouldn't be population even comparable to the rest. And then, we had also a very difficult time trying to find other areas in which the population would total to 20,000 if we didn't break the city of Madera in half. So, you can see that reporting area A, that line that you see is the 99 freeway through reporting area A and C on the top part and D on the bottom. So, city of Madera, part of the city is in reporting area A and part of the city is in reporting area C. So, once we got to the threshold of at least five cases in each reporting area, that's when we were able to start reporting that information and follow rules with regards to confidentiality in public health. And the case distribution geographically is not surprising. It really follows like where our population actually lives. And so, it's the cases that you see numbered there are very reflective of where the population is located. It's distributed in a way that's predictable. So, I think when people look at this reporting area map, the most important message to receive is we have cases of COVID across the entire county. And it's important for everyone to take this seriously and to follow the guidance to be able to prevent COVID-19. So, an important thing happened today. The governor made a significant announcement. We know that, I think it was last week or earlier this week, it didn't affect us, so I can't remember what day it was. But the governor decided to issue an order that required counties that had been on a monitoring list for a certain period of time to issue a local order and close bars. And there were lots of reasons why they chose bars as the first one. But this second order that's coming today, or came today, is very similar in that it uses the monitoring list, but identifies other businesses. So, in Madera County, we really have done an excellent job. And I'm not speaking about we, public health. I'm proud of the work that we're doing. I'm saying we, the community, have done an excellent job. Residents have done a great job. And our partners in business, our partners in cities, we just have collaborated well. And people have made real sacrifices and we recognize that there are big things that happened in people's individual lives. You know, residents certainly sacrificed by staying at home and not going out. They skipped gatherings and events were canceled. Businesses shut their doors and have realized significant impacts related to that. And all of those actions culminated to what has been a very low case count in Madera County. Our contact tracing efforts have been nationally recognized and we're very proud of that. And so, I think that it's important that before we move forward and we talk about what's next, that we do recognize that in Madera, we have, and all of our residents have really made big sacrifices and our partners have really worked together to do the best that we can. And I think people are doing the best that they can. Recently, as you've seen, there's an increase in cases and there's an increase in hospitalizations. And hospitalizations are our biggest concern. And in Madera, we want people to stay healthy, for sure. And we want businesses and the community to be able to stay open. So, just to give you an idea of the change, in the second half of May, the last 14 days of May, we had 23 new cases of COVID altogether in 14 days. In the second half of June, the last 14 days, we had 170 new cases. So, it's significant difference in terms of the rate of new cases that are coming. In June, we also saw hospitalizations go from five to 12. And then, today, they are up at 14. So, we find ourselves at this really critical moment in terms of how we're going to manage it and what we're going to do moving forward. We and the state are monitoring important COVID stats for Madera County. And that includes things that are familiar to you: cases, positivity rate. Positivity rate means of all the tests that we've done, what's the percent of them that are positive? Tests per population, how much are we testing based on the size of our community? Hospitalizations. How many ICU beds are available? And right now, we look at the ICU beds across Madera and Fresno because we know that about 60% of Madera County population, at least, that's an estimate, uses Fresno County for their healthcare. So, we're looking at bed availability across both counties. And there are a total of 421 ICU beds in our hospitals when you add them all together. Of those 421, we have right now 91 available. That was the report that came from numbers yesterday, the hospital reported. So, that's a little over 21%. That's all the beds we've got available right now for everything. Because ICU is obviously not used just for COVID, it's used for lots of other things. And so, those 422 beds include COVID patients as well as everyone else who needs intensive care in the hospital. So, we're watching that and the state's also watching. We're watching the availability of ventilators because COVID affects the respiratory system and people may need to be intubated if they have an acute illness. So, it's an important thing for us to monitor that availability. So, when data indicates major concerns in a county, then that county is identified on the monitoring list at the state level. That's what they call it, the monitoring list. At the county level, we call it the naughty list, just because that's how it feels. We're working super hard and we don't want to be on the monitoring list, for sure. Right now, Madera County is not on the monitoring list. And we're the only county in the Central Valley that is not on the monitoring list. That's important to know. So, we are surrounded by counties that are on the monitoring list and have been for at least 14 days. We haven't been on the monitoring list yet at all. And so, we'll talk about where we're at in just a second. So, what happened today is that the governor announced that counties that have been on the monitoring list for three days or longer consecutively are now required to implement a three-week closure of bars and then indoor operations of restaurants, wineries, tasting rooms, movie theaters, family entertainment centers. So, that's everything from bowling alleys to miniature golf, batting cages, arcades. There's lots of things in that category, zoos and museums, and card rooms. So, those can operate outdoor. So, if a restaurant has an outdoor space, they could use that, but indoor space would be closed. Same with wineries. We know a lot of our wineries have outdoor space. They could utilize that, but they can't have people inside, right? And so, this is again for counties that are on the monitoring list for at least three days. They would have this closure. So, the reason that these particular sectors were selected by the state is because these businesses bring together multiple households and in enclosed spaces, which increases the risk of transmission of COVID. What we've learned about households is that typically, if one person gets sick in the household, all the rest of the family is becoming sick. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what kind of messaging and things that we are putting in place to help that from happening. But it's concerning when we bring households together because if three people go to lunch and they're from three different households and each of those households have five people, instead of one person spreading it to two people, it's one person probably spread it to their household of five and then also spread it to these two people, which spread it to their household of five. So, then one case turned into 15. And that's what we're seeing. That's why the cases are increasing so quickly. So, if a county, which again includes Merced, it includes Fresno, it includes Tulare and Kings, but not Madera yet, then they have to close for three weeks, these businesses that I named. If they come off of the monitoring list during that three-week time, at the end of the three-week closure, then those businesses can open again. So, it's kind of like we got the car rolling again and the state is applying some brakes in areas of the state where the data is showing that we need to slow down. That's the theory. So, today, we're not on the monitoring list, so we're not closing anything today. And the question is, is how do we keep Madera open? That's the goal. We want people to be healthy and we want Madera to stay open as much as possible. So, we are really asking people, regardless of how they feel about COVID, regardless of political affiliation, we want everybody working together to keep our businesses open and to keep people from getting sick. And I think that we all want people to be healthy and we all want for people to be able to live their normal lives and certainly have their businesses open. So, the way that we do that is, of course, very familiar things. We follow the guidance for safe practices. And so, of course, six feet distancing, hygiene practices, things that many of us have been practicing for a long time. And then, now we know that the state has provided mandated guidance for face covering. And I've got mine right here and wear it whenever someone else is in the room. I'm by myself in my office right now. And so, if you rewind two, three months, there was not great science relating to masks and COVID. And there were questions and we didn't feel like we could recommend it with the science behind us. But now, there's very good research to show the effectiveness of a face covering in preventing transmission of COVID. And so, I want to emphasize that the state released it as guidance. But after a few days, we learned that there is a state order. It's called N2520. And it requires that residents follow orders or guidance of the state and local public health officials. So, for face covering, it's important to keep in mind, there are legitimate exemptions for many people. And those exemptions are often medical and other people are not required to share with us what their medical exemption might be. And so, if people see others who are not wearing face coverings in public and following that order, then what we encourage them to do is not engage them, don't talk to them about it, assume they have an exemption and stay at least six feet away from that person to protect you and your family from transmission. So, we want to remember that face covering, your face covering protects me and my face covering protects you. The second thing that we want people to do is to stop gathering socially. This is related to what I referred to earlier. Gatherings with people from different households, including those in people's homes, backyard barbecues, swim parties, all kinds of things, right? People are gathering and it's multiple households in one space. We want people to avoid this because we need to reduce that transmission, that's person-to-person in homes through gatherings. If people must gather, then we're asking them to reduce the risk by gathering outside if possible, wearing face coverings, and distancing. The third thing that people can do, and something that we're working on, a website across the Central Valley. It's going to be branded by our San Joaquin Valley Public Health Consortium. And it's going to have a very focused purpose. It's a place for anyone to go and get information. And we're going to launch it first in English and Spanish with the goal of adding additional languages later. But it's going to be very straightforward, basic information about what to do if you're sick. So, first of all, we want people to stay home. That we've talked about for a long time. But like I said, people who stay home when they're sick then transmit it to everyone in their family. So, we're going to give practical things that people can do if they are home and sick to protect other people in their household. Especially if it's multiple families, multi-generations in the same household, we want to reduce that transmission. And really importantly, if someone in that household is over age 65 or has a medical condition, it's really important that people do what they can to distance themselves from those individuals in the home. So, we want people to do their best to distance, understanding that physical constraints are real. Wear a face covering. And this is the whole family, not just the person who's sick. But the whole family needs to wear face coverings because a person is most contagious 48 hours before they get symptoms. So, if I get symptoms today, then Monday and Tuesday, I was shedding virus and getting other people sick, but I didn't know it because I didn't have symptoms, right? I didn't know I was sick yet. That's why face coverings are so important for everyone, regardless of whether or not you feel sick. So, in the home, that's true. If you've been exposed to somebody who has COVID or if somebody in your family has COVID in your household, everybody should wear that face covering anytime they're in the room with someone else. It's also important for people who are sick to eat at a different table from the rest of the household and if possible, sleep in another room. And if they can't, then try and separate beds so that they're not going to have a face covering on when they're sleeping. So, being able to have that distance is important to reduce transmission. Also, like sanitizing surfaces after they use common areas like restroom, kitchen, things like that are important. So, we're going to... So we're going to be really pushing out those messages of people taking personal ownership. I may not have a positive COVID test. I might have heard that my friend is sick and I'm not sick yet, but I can keep distance from other people, wear my face covering and prevent others from getting sick. If I have someone who's sick in my home, there are things that I can do to prevent other family members, especially those vulnerable, from getting sick. And we're also going to empower, we're also going to empower people to be able to identify who they might have exposed if they are sick and they can reach out to those contacts themselves as well. We're happy to do that contacting at the health department. They can reach out to us, we'll help them, but if they want to contact their friends and other colleagues themselves, they can do that. And the other thing that of course, we want businesses to follow the guidance and operate safely. And there's lots of guidance to do that. There's tools that are in place. Our business planning tool is on our website. It's a great tool for them to put together all of the practical things that they want to have happen at their business to be safe. The business checklist poster we've talked about that you see up around a lot of businesses. And we want business owners as much as possible to help their staff and customers follow the guidance, including face coverings. And so we would love for businesses to offer disposable masks to people who come who don't have face coverings, either at cost, so they can charge the cost of the mask to the individual or free. You know, businesses want customers, so if they can, you know, have those masks available, then more people are going to feel comfortable coming to their business. And then we want customers to go to businesses that are safe and kind of implement that market force incentive for businesses to run safe environments to prevent the spread of COVID. We are also encouraging residents to communicate with the Department of Public Health if they see something out in the community, in particular with businesses, and that isn't good and is not following the guidance. And they can do that by going to our website and filling out the community feedback form. And they could also do that by calling 311. And we do actually log all of those complaints and our staff are reaching out to those businesses to help those businesses become compliant. So the goal is to educate, inform and help people do this well. Because again, we want businesses to stay open. We don't want to punish businesses. We want them to have customers. So we want to provide support and help and education for them to be able to do that. And we're also going to be tracking how many complaints there are and telling the business, if we've called them third, this is the third complaint, your customers are paying attention, right? So again, using those market drivers to help people work together to slow the spread of COVID. So it's important to understand with COVID that there's, what we did two to three weeks ago, we, everybody, did two to three weeks ago, is manifesting today. What we see in terms of case counts and hospitalizations is accumulation of what everybody did over the last two to three weeks. We can't change that. So we have the case counts we have, we have the hospitalizations we have, but what we do is we have the power to do stuff now differently to impact how it goes forward, right? And so I'll give it to you straight. We are very close to being on the monitoring list, really close. And it may be that in the next week, we're on the monitoring list and we meet the criteria that requires us to implement what the governor put out today around closing those businesses I named before. We don't want that. So there's kind of two ways this can go. The first is, is if we stay off the monitoring list, that's the goal, we stay open at the level we're at now. There's not going to be additional opening. That's not where we're at. And to stay off the monitoring list, we have to slow the spread of COVID. That's what we have to do. If we end up on the monitoring list, we will have to close those businesses for a three-week period of time. While it, many of them again can do outdoor but not indoor, remember how I described it. And if we can get off the monitoring list during that three-week closure, at the end of that time period, then those businesses could reopen, under state guidance, following those directives safely. So I think the real message to the community, to our business owners, to our residents is let's work together, follow what we know to be true. We know that many of the actions that are laid out in the guidance is based in science. We can slow the spread of COVID and keep our businesses open as much as we possibly can. And so, you know, that's really an important message going into this Fourth of July weekend. What we've seen is that we see case counts come in kind of cohorts and after the two-week time period after holidays. So we saw the Mother's Day cases, we saw the Memorial Day cases, we saw the Father's Day cases, we're going to see Fourth of July cases. And we really want to encourage people to celebrate Fourth of July, celebrate your freedom in a way that protects others and celebrate with your household. That's the best way to keep our businesses open and keep people going to work. So I'll stop there. Sorry for the long piece, but I think it's important that you all understand kind of our approach and what we want from Department of Public Health and the messaging and tools that we're putting out there for people to work together.
Absolutely, Sarah. Thank you very much. And I think the message is very, very clear and simple. Councilman Robinson has a comment.
Yes, I have two comments. You know, on the efficiency of the mask, like for instance, you know, N95 mask for viruses, 95%. But for cloth masks, the virus is 0%. FFP1 mask is 95%. Sponge mask is 0%. And you know, I see all the variety of people walking around with all type of gear. And I don't see how that can be helpful if you don't have the right mask to wear. Plus, what is percentage of people dying from COVID? You know, I hear all the large amount of people getting infected, but how many people are dying? You know, I know in Madera, five people had died because they had underlying health issues.
We are seeing higher, or most of the people who do die related to COVID have underlying health conditions. In our county, it's about 2% that we're seeing actually die as a result. And I think that it's important to, like 2% doesn't sound like a lot until you apply it across the entire population. So if we have no mitigation measures and case counts go really, really high, 2% then becomes a significant number. And what's also really significant is our hospitalizations and whether or not people are able to get the care and treatment, not only for COVID, but also for everything else. And so that's why it's important for us to watch these numbers and slow the spread of COVID-19. With regards to masking, I'm very happy to send out to all of the council members the science related to masking. And it's very well established that cloth masks also do provide significant protection. I don't have the percentages off the top of my head, but it is significant.
It's significant, but you know, the regulatory agency that cover, you know, safety measure for people who need to wear masks, you know, they certify what masks are effective and which one aren't. And I've been reading a lot of articles saying that you have to have the right one. And not only that, but you can't even wear the same one over and over. You know, you only can wear it for like a couple, four hours and you throw it away.
I'm very happy to review the information that you're referring to and we can have a separate discussion about that if you'd like.
All right, thank you.
And I think, I think something is better than nothing. I think that's been said before, Sarah, is that we would all like to wear N95 masks or certified masks, but sometimes in some particular cases, something is better than nothing. And as far as the number of deaths, in my personal opinion, it's not the number. You know, explain to the families that it's only five. If it's preventable, if these deaths can be preventable, then one is too many if it happens because we're just being irresponsible. So you're absolutely right, Sarah. We need to be responsible. We need to work together. This is about us. I wear a mask for you and you wear a mask for me. And if we can continue acting in the way we have in Madera County and keep our numbers low and be responsible, I think we will, we will definitely get through this curve and not beyond the naughty list. Councilman Holly.
Yes. Hi, Sarah.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm doing well.
My question is, what about churches? Are they allowed to open back up or what is their requirements?
Churches are still allowed to be open. The guidance is 25% of their room capacity or 100 people, whichever is, like they can't exceed 100 people. So if their room can hold 150, there's still, you know, 100 is the max that they can go to. And so the churches, and we've been working with ministerial association, with St. Okum, and kind of strategizing about how they can do that, and they've been very cooperative. There are always conversations about which sector and which kinds of things are mitigation measures. And we, our observation has been that the faith communities have been very cooperative and wanting to implement safe environments. And so we didn't advocate for faith communities or churches worship services to be a part of the list because it was, it was something that was entertained by the governor on this list that he put out today, but it wasn't on there and partly because actually Dr. Paul had a lot to say about that wasn't the best route.
Okay. All right, thank you. I needed that. That's it, Mr. Mayor. I'm done.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Councilman Robinson.
Yes, also I was concerned about the regular flu. You know, they separate regular flu from COVID flu. And plus, if people aren't able to work and they have miles to feed, you know, that causes more harm than the COVID-19. I mean, yes, COVID-19.
Thank you for that.
Our goal is to keep people working. We want to keep people working.
Absolutely. Thank you, Sarah. Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Sarah, I know we touched on masks here. Is there, I know that a face covering is better than no face covering whatsoever, but is there any recommendation from the county public health as far as what types of masks people should be out? I know we talked about the N95 and others, but is there a specific mask that people should be, you know, wanting to acquire so that they can be safer, not only for the public, but for themselves as well?
So first of all, N95, we're not encouraging the general public to use N95s because they are in short supply and we want them to be available for healthcare workers. And then in terms of cloth face covering, there is some science with regards to multiple layers. We're not emphasizing that in terms of communication with the public because we feel that it's a barrier for some people. And we're going for more people wearing face coverings as a primary goal. And then as a secondary goal, we can look at like which masks are more effective. But what we're seeing is that any cloth face covering, that it reduces transmission by about 50%, especially if people are closer to one another. Again, I know last time I emphasized social distancing. Social distancing is still the number one thing that people can do. And then you add masks or face coverings to that and it's an extra measure of protection.
So at this time, the county is not as encouraging or is it getting ready to mandate that everyone wear a face mask? I know that this was a question that was asked previously, but where is the county's position here, the public health's position on that? Is that going to be something that you can see maybe if numbers continue to rise?
It is mandated at this point by the state. So it's a state order that mandates that we implement the guidance on face covering.
So because it's a mandate, then obviously that becomes enforceable. How is the public health going to enforce that, if you don't mind me asking? How would you enforce it?
So the emphasis is on using market forces to get people to be compliant. The reality is, is that enforcement for each individual person wearing a face covering is nearly impossible. So what we need is the buy-in of the community to follow the masking guidance, use a face covering. And a lot of that is around businesses and people understanding the benefits of what that looks like. So the state has mandated it and we are wanting people to understand the benefit of keeping businesses and the community open and using that to drive people to actually follow through and do face covering.
So an example would be that if a business does not comply with that, then there is some type of enforcement that the county would take on that or in a case maybe, would you have any law enforcement be involved? And I only ask that because I know to what degree and to what measure the public health or the county would be enforcing the mandate of that mask.
So as I described earlier, our approach is to work with businesses to reach compliance. So if we are informed of a business that's not implementing the masking, especially with their employees, because that's their specific responsibility, but also with customers as they're able, then we are reaching out to them and perhaps either on the phone first, I think if it's multiple, then we're going to be looking at what the next steps are with that. The masking guidance is fairly new. So we're not to the place that we have businesses that we've spoken to multiple times and it's still egregious and they refuse to follow the guidance. So we really, really want to work with businesses and keep them open and help them understand that their customers are looking for safe places. And so that's why we're encouraging customers, if they're going to a place and it's not safe, the employees aren't wearing face coverings, there's no distancing, there's too many people, they're not following the guidance, then we want those customers to inform us and then we're going to be able to log with those businesses. Hey, your customers want this, you need to follow through.
Thank you, Sarah. I think, like you said, it's more of a self-enforcement and making it aware so that all businesses can participate and make sure that they're safe. Thank you for the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. We have Councilman Robinson again and then Mayor Protem Garcia.
Yes, shouldn't people be wearing also a face shield because COVID-19 can transmit the virus in people's eyes? And that's a fact. Or should they be wearing goggles or whatever?
So at this time, face shields are not required by state order. Face coverings are what's required. If a person is not able to do a face covering because they have an exemption, then a face shield is recommended as another option. For people's protection, we would never say, don't wear a face shield. A face shield is a good protective measure, especially especially for individuals that are in a work situation where they're going to be up close with someone else. And so if, if employees are going to be really close to one another, we are encouraging use of both the, the face covering to cover the nose and mouth, plus a face shield, maybe Plexiglas barriers. If they're not able to achieve that six-foot distance for the, their work product. And so it's, these are the tools that we have. You're right. If a, if a person has on a face mask and a shield, they're going to be more protected. At this point, we're trying to get people to do the face covering. I think if we layered on face shield as a requirement, that's, that's not gonna be productive at this point.
Even though it's more protective.
Just as a reminder, I know we're, we're kind of getting off, this is a presentation and informational item. This is not a debate or anything like that. So I'd like to move along if we could, please. Thank you, Mr. Councilman, for your, your questions. Mayor Protem Garcia.
That was going to be my point. I think that, you know, we asked Sarah to graciously come and report to us. And we've gone on a little bit long and we're turning this a little bit more. The questions are good. I'm, I'm not going to debate that. But this is a report, what we should be doing if we want to expand on this. And this tsunami is looking us in the face of having to close down again like we did in the past. And we should have a more robust discussion amongst the city council at that time to be saying, what are the steps that we could do to make sure that doesn't happen? Because nobody wants to go back to, to being closed down again. So thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for those comments. And I agree. We always appreciate Ms. Boss being here with us and keeping us up to date. This is very valuable information and we want to make sure that our community is well informed. So I agree, these are all good questions that we can relay on to our community to help stay safe. But again, I don't want to get sidetracked. I don't want to get into the weeds. And so please, Sarah has had an open door policy. She's easily accessible. Her plate is very full, but she's always been gracious enough to take our calls seven days a week. So thank you, Sarah, very, very much for that. And before we go, I just want to ask one last thing. You had mentioned before the, the website and also calling 311. Is there a direct number? Is that the quickest way for somebody to call if they are at an establishment that they feel is not practicing social distancing? Is 311 the, the best number to call?
Yes. So the system that we have on the backend is that we have staff that are specifically assigned to respond to business complaints. And so when it comes through 311, 311 logs it into that system and it goes directly to that staff that can then contact that business.
Great.
They can also use the community feedback form that's on our COVID-19 website.
Right. We will encourage that from the city, from my personal social media page. And I just want to be sure that that is the absolute best number to send on to everybody to use. Thank you, Sarah. We always appreciate you being here with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
To your team as well, Sarah. I know you guys are working around the clock and, and doing an absolutely fantastic job. So thank you to you, to you and your team for all your hard work and dedication.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too, Sarah. Moving on to the consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar and it will be considered separately. With that, I will ask my colleagues if there's any reason to pull any consent calendar item for discussion. If not, I will entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
Say again.
Moved by Councilman Holly and seconded by Councilman Robinson to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very, very much for that. Moving on into our first report, there are no public hearings this evening, this evening. Our first item, item D1, this is the annual lease rates for non-commercial aeronautical land areas at the Madera Municipal Airport. I believe, Mr. Boss, give him the presentation.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, members of council, let me share my screen for you real quick. Okay, it's looking good. Everybody's got the screen there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what we're going to be talking about today, as the mayor touched on, is lease rates for non-commercial hangar space out at the Madera Municipal Airport. So it should be a fairly quick presentation here. So currently where we're at is 20 cents per square foot. Now that is the base rate. Now, what I mean by that, we'll get into in just a second, but it does go up every five years based on the CPI, which I'll explain. But that was established back in 2008. So for example, if we have a hangar that's 30,000 square foot, which is a moderately sized hangar. We don't have a whole lot of those out there, but they're actually getting more and more popular and we're getting more in demand for those. And that is the reason to a large extent of why we did this lease rate study. We're getting some more interest out at the airport. So we wanted to make sure we're at fair market value for what we should be leasing this property for. So if we have a 30,000 square foot hangar, that's approximately $6,000 a month in rent or lease for that hangar space. Now, the CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, they recommend that be completed every five years. And what that does, it's built into the lease for all leasing spaces out at the airport. We actually will go up or down, hopefully usually it's up based on inflation, and it will add to the price of the lease. So what that means is currently with the CPI included, our lease rate is at 26 cents per square foot. So that would mean that same 30,000 square foot hangar would be leased out at about 7,800. So even though it's only a six cents difference, you can see it adds up pretty quick when you start talking about these rather large buildings. Okay, so the lease rate study. So what we did is we contacted ACMG, which is Aviation Consulting Management Group. They're out of Colorado and they have a lot of experience. We, we reached out to several other airports comparable size to us. And this was highly recommended organization and they did a lease rate study for us. They used data for similar airports in regional and nationally. They used information that was obtained from more than 500 airports across the United States. They used data that was comparable, were comparable airports. Now comparable airports means airports with approximately our size that do not have a tower, an air tower, and with a procession approach, which I don't exactly know what that means, but from what I understand, it means where it's more, they can approach on their own and control their own landing and takeoff. And we use nearby airports, which is about 55 nautical miles. Now, there's a difference between nearby airports and comparable airports. Comparable airports are just the airports without the watchtowers and the same type of approach. Nearby airports is just any airport that's nearby. We take all that data, combine it, and then we get our number of where we are at fair market value. So this graph here will just give you a real quick overview. Nationally, it's about 26 cents per square foot, which is exactly where we're at now. Regionally, it's about 32 cents per square foot. Comparable airports are at about 37 cents per square foot. And then local comparable airports are 47 cents, which we'll break down further in just a second. So here is some airports that we did use that are comparable. Now, as you'll see, those comparable airports do not mean nearby airports. We have some from Texas, Pennsylvania, the Dakotas, Arkansas, Utah, Wisconsin, Georgia. But those were the comparables that have the same type of setup we do. Now with airports, they're a little different than many other things where airports, no matter where they're really at, they all affect the market of what the airport rental space may be. And here's some of the local competitive airports that we did use. So you could see for Fresno, they vary depending on which, where your location is and some other amenities you might have. It can 50 and 60 cents. For Modesto, they're 50 to 95 cents. For Pine Mountain Lake, now this one's only five cents, but there's a caveat to that. And to have some information on that one is it's in Groveland. If anybody knows where that's at, it's a private community. So you have to be a resident of that community to have the hangar space and they have HOA fees. So even though it says five cents, really when you factor in HOA, it's a hard number to place that on. Visalia is 26 to 38 cents. Fresno Yosemite is 55 cents. Hanford's 34 cents and Chocilla is 14 cents. I have the asterisk there because Chocilla only has the T-hangers, which is the very small hangers designed to, to hold the smaller one-man airplanes, one or two-man airplanes.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
That airport that's in Fresno, that's out there on Herndy, are they still operating?
Yes. Now, is that Chandler?
No, that's actually Sierra Sky Park. Sierra Sky Park's a private airport. It's actually in the county of Fresno. And it's the first homeowners association airport in America. It was built in the 1960s.
Yes.
So that is a private airport and it's not controlled by the city of Fresno.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
That one wouldn't be included on here. So here, when I said we had some interest in the airport, this slide here shows where our major interest is. Where we have several different clients that are looking to build or rent available spots we have that are highlighted on this slide here. So I believe you can see my mouse when I move it on this. For reference, this is the south side of the airport. These are the smaller T-hangers we have for the airport. Here's the office in here. And then we have these hangers that have been, most of these have been here for some time, I'm sorry, along here. These are all fairly new and we're continuing to build this way. And if I do the next slide, you'll see where it's broken down to we have these five parcels that we're actually looking to rent out individually. So we're in contact with several potential clients right now. They're looking to build really as soon as absolutely possible. They would like to do it tomorrow for additional hangar spaces out there and we're working with them actively to get those done. So based on all the information that we did collect through ACMG, they recommended a rate between 30 and 35 cents. Staff recommends 32 cents per square foot, which is right in the middle and then erring on the side of the consumer. This would increase the standard, that 30,000 square foot building that we talked about when we flew the CPI from 7,800 to about 9,600 per month. The CPI would still be used every five years. So that 32% would be the base rate. Every five years, a CPI study should be done and completed and that would make that 32 cents either up or down based on the economy. And lease opportunities were shown on your last slide there. So staff recommendation again would be 32 cents per square foot for again, non-commercial land lease base rate. Now, I would, I will be probably returning to you shortly for commercial lease rates, which would be a different dollar amount. So this would just be for your private type hangers. And with that, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Boss. I appreciate that. I'm looking for hands up to see if there's any questions. I, I will ask Mr. Boss about our cost. I, I can appreciate that you have been working with Mr. Rodriguez on bringing us up to date over a study that was done 12 years ago. So that's, that's fantastic. But what, what would be our, our cost or the city's cost? I, I get that, that we should be at or about 32 cents. I can certainly support that. But what, what costs do we incur besides just being the owners of the airport?
So when you mean costs, when we have somebody build a hangar?
Yes. Or is it basically just land lease?
It's land lease. And I, I don't want to give a, a super definitive answer to you, Mayor, without being wrong on this, but I believe our cost is very minimal. So when we rent the space, we rent the space and generally the way the contract is written, and I have limited experience on this, but the ones that I have seen and I have reviewed some and I'm reviewing some currently, they build the hangar and they are looking for longer-term leases because they're putting a lot of expenditures into this property. And they usually want about a 20-year land lease. They're leasing the land for that dollar amount. Usually it ends in the lease and there is some technicalities on this of when they walk away, the hangar generally is ours. So if they after 20 years decide to leave, we have the hangar. Now, a 20-year-old hangar is getting a little older, but you probably have another 20 years of life out of it. So our expenditures are fairly low. Now, they think it turns it, yeah, fairly minimal. It turns into, we're starting to get more use at the runway. So are we eventually going to have to have more staff out at the runway? Are we going to have to have more equipment? Eventually, as we grow, yes, that could incur. So everybody that does go out there does add to the wear and tear and the general makings of the airport. But right now, I don't see that as a, a problem in the foreseeable future. We're managing it pretty well with what we have out there. But yes, definitely that could on the horizon be an issue, but I look at that as a good issue. If we continue to grow and build and expand out the airport and have to bring in additional hands. As you could see, each hangar and rent is a decent amount of funds coming in. So, but yeah, I would say minimal impact to us.
Thank you. And as you pointed out before, as you did the comparables with other like cities and then our neighboring cities, one thing that Madera has as well, besides being the gem in the Central Valley with our airport, is we do have space to expand, quite a bit of space, of space.
So I, I will, I guess I would like to close with, we're, we're seeing a lot of interest in our airport. And we have a very nice airport. So as, when I went over to Public Works and took over the airport and started going out there, it's, it's very well maintained. As you pointed out, it has a lot of space. We're close to, very close, especially when you're talking about as the crow flies, because it's the airport, very close to other amenities which are far more expensive and we have very ease of access at our airport. So if you have a plane on your airport or our airport, it's easy to get onto your hangar. It's easy to get off. Or if you go into Fresno, that might not be the case. So we're seeing some interest from our neighboring cities that want to come here. We even have Hanford as a comparable, which I think is a comparable, but also I honestly think they're not because we're right off the 99, especially right there. We have a lot of things that are, are going for us. And I don't want to carry on too much, so. But it seems to be getting quite a bit of attention out of the airport right now. And that's why we want to make sure we're in the market value and charging a reasonable rate for both sides.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate you being, being a prideful of our airport. Mayor Protem Garcia, did you have your hand up?
I did, but the question was just answered, so I'm good.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. I do not see any attendees with any questions. I don't believe we've had any public comment in. So if there's no further questions from council, I will call for action on item D1.
Motion to approve.
I can't.
Been moved by Mayor Protem Garcia and seconded by Councilwoman Garcia, or Diego's, my apologies, to approve item D1. This is a adopted resolution approving the increase in rent, the 32 cents. But all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Moving on to item D2, this is landscape and lighting assessment district zones of benefit. This is the engineer's report and intention of levy and collect annual assessments for the citywide landscape and lighting assessment district zones of benefit for fiscal year 2020, 2021. I believe Mr. Helmoth will be taking this item.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor. Council members, I take it you can see the presentation?
Yes.
This is in fact the landscape maintenance district engineer's report for the year, the fiscal year 2020, 2021. And I just need to move on my way there. For, for this year, the engineer's report incorporates everything that Parks knows about zones since taking over maintenance five years ago. They, they've garnered a lot of experience in the last five years or so and they've been taking that into account in how they maintain the, the various zones within the city. Of note, Proposition 218 hearings will not be occurring this year. We're, due to continued incorporation of the new accounting system, we're still a little bit behind on getting the, the full numbers up to speed as quickly as, as we hope to. Staffing changes in finance, Parks and Engineering, and then COVID-19. I anticipate that this would not have been a good year to go ahead and do Proposition 218 hearings. What about next year? We, we do, we do hope to go ahead and do Proposition 218 hearings, though COVID-19 may still have an impact on those. We also want to pursue, pursue the merger of zones 10 through 10I that's been talked about in the past. And we do hope to go ahead and work with the city attorney to determine other ways in which we can go ahead and reduce potential for new zones, greater flexibility managing the fund balances that we have. Talking a little bit, going back to the new zones, we have this year been successful not increasing the number of zones again. It is in fact getting to be more difficult. There is a point at which if we see an assessment for a zone increase because of the addition of a particular development, as we understand it, we would need to go ahead and do a Proposition 218 for all the properties within that zone. Prop 218s are, are not successful in many cases, so we will continue to, to make those attempts. But we also want to continue to go ahead and read, we want to go ahead and try to reduce the number of zones. Adding zones just makes it much more complex. It's already complex. The outstanding zone that I was talking about, the zones that we're talking about for merging, those are zones 10A through I. Uh the outstanding zone that was talking about, uh zones that we're talking about for merging, those are zones ten A through I. Right now, the assessments there vary from about twenty dollars to about fifty-nine dollars. So when we, when we start talking about doing a merger and talking to the uh parcel owners. It 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 might be difficult just in the fact that we're asking uh many of those property owners to agree to an increases in assessments. Um we'll hope to go ahead and show that we're a little bit more efficient when showing it to them. Uh and then indicate that'll be better for them in the future, but uh. We recognize that that may be a little bit difficult and we'll have to go ahead and do a a public meeting or two with them to go ahead and discuss it. But if we are successful, we'll be looking at nine less zones, uh nine less zones to manage. Uh again, the impediments would be the two eighteen history and possible COVID impacts. This is zone ten, it uh when you look at the the cumulative A through I, you you see the 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 colors throughout. Uh and those are ten zones, but they don't, they don't uh share the same landscaping. So we 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 picked out tone zone ten C as an example. And when you look over here, you see uh this area, that is uh shared areas. It it doesn't share in the other areas on this, on the opposite side of the screen on Sunset. And that occurs for each of these. They each share in different ways. They each share in different costs. And uh this is, this is the poster child in terms of trying to go ahead and reduce the number of zones. With that, I'm pretty much to the end of the report and I would recommend uh approval of the engineer's report with any amendments as may be requested by city council.
Great, Keith. Thank you very much for that. And I can certainly appreciate the efficiency with the number of zones that we have throughout the city. Well, thank you. Thank you very much for that. Any questions, Mr. Helmut, regarding this report? I see no attendees wishing to speak. So if there is no more further discussion, uh I will call for action on item D two. This is uh the first action is to adopt a minute order approving the engineer's report and the second one is to adopt a resolution of intent to levy and collect annual assessments.
We can take them together, right, Miss Mayor?
Yes.
Move to approve D two one and D two two.
It's been moved by Councilman Montez and seconded by Councilwoman Gallegos to approve item D two with both components. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Me opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, Keith. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item D three, this is the sale of a manufactured unit at twelve eighteen East Cleveland Avenue, space number four. Uh the recommendation is to approve a minute order accepting a twenty-five thousand dollar cash offer, uh which is determined to be fair market value. Yvette? Will you believe that the uh giving this presentation?
Yes, Mayor, she will be.
Okay.
Okay.
I muted. Um good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Um checking that my screen is is visible.
Yes, it is.
Very good. Um this is an item requesting that uh council approve a minute order accepting an offer. For a manufactured unit in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. I will start by providing a little bit of history. Um in twenty fifteen, Mr. and Mrs. Menhades obtained a Cal Home manufactured on owner-occupied rehabilitation loan from the city of Madera. The amount of the loan was fifty-five thousand two hundred and forty-five. And this was used to purp- to purchase a manufactured unit that would be placed at twelve eighteen East Cleveland Avenue, space number four. Which is the um the Meadows. Um it is a senior mobile home park and the family, the couple intended to live there uh for the rest of their lives. But were unable to do so. Our understanding is that uh one of the um. The partners passed away and they weren't able to stay in the unit. Um the benefits of this of this loan, I just wanted to um share that it's 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 been. Very beneficial for those that obtain these types of loans because it's deferred for thirty years and there is no interest. However, one of the requirements is that it be homeowner occupied. And because uh Mr. Menhades wasn't able to stay in the unit after the passing of his wife, um that. Voids the terms of the loan. So in twenty nineteen, in May twenty nineteen, the city was notified that the tenants were in default with the Meadows. Due to failure to pay their rent of space number four since October twenty eighteen. The Meadows was going to sell the unit um through an auction to recover lost rent. However, um city of Madera staff was able to stall the sale. And what and requested direction from council on how to handle this matter. City council directed staff to sell the unit. And therefore, the unit was listed in the amount of thirty-five thousand at the end of February. Um we received, there were no offers um until May twenty-seven, when we received an offer for twenty-five thousand. At the time of the listing, comps were selling in the thirty thousand range. However, um when we asked the realtor to tell us what the comps were in May. They had dropped to approximately twenty thousand. So we consider that um the twenty-five thousand dollars is fair market value at this time. Staff recommends that city council accept the twenty-five thousand cash offer. And the sale proceeds will be used to pay for some administrative costs that have already been incurred. Including the rent owed to the Meadows, realtor commissions, et cetera. We had some costs incurred um due to um cleaning out the unit and um. And then uh any remaining proceeds will be put back into the program as program income for a future project. At this point, I will answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you for that, Yvette. I appreciate it. And um the the program account is still fairly liquid, right? It's still fairly, a a fairly solid account. Um this was just one that. For circumstances unforeseen that just kind of stepped through, but for the most part, this this program and project is still liquid and fluid.
Yes, we have a program income account, um and we can continue to do projects, not only manufactured homes, but regular rehab projects. And uh we have more interest from residents that live in single-family homes, more so than manufactured units at this point.
Great. Thank you so much. You've got any questions of Ms. Yedeth regarding this particular item? I see none. I see, I I'm sorry, Councilman Holly, did you have something to say?
No, sir, I didn't.
Okay, there's no attendees, so with that, I'll bring it back to council. Uh the recommendation is to approve a minute order accepting the twenty-five thousand dollar cash offer.
So move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Holly and seconded by Councilman Rodriguez to approve item D three and accept the cash offer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Yvette. Moving on to item D four, this is the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Public Benefits Program Grant. Uh this was part of our uh late distribution announcement, and I be- believe before we go on to item before. There's still another announcement that needs to be made. Hilda, is there a, is there something that you needed to uh clarify before we move forward?
I can do that, Mayor, after uh Yvette's presentation. I will, I I do want to clarify a couple of things regarding the exhibits.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. With that, we will proceed. Again, this is the grant for the downtown Madera Veterans and Family Project in the amount of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred fifty-one dollars. Uh there's two recommendations moving forward, so with that, I will turn it over to uh Yvette to continue.
Well, um very good. Let me go back to this one because it has the amount very clear. Um this is an item to accept the San Joaquin Valley Unified Air Pollution Control District Public Benefits Program Grant. In the amount of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-one. This was a grant that was submitted in August twenty nineteen to the district. And in November, um fairly quick, quick response rate um of the same year, city received notice of award. However, the grant agreement was just received last month. I'm sorry, um today's July, so in May twenty twenty. Um and the five hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars are intended. To go towards the development of the downtown Madera Veterans and Family Housing Project. The goals under this grant are to increase diversity, and that means multiple land use types in neighborhoods. To improve walkability, improve destination accessibility, as well as improve transit accessibility. And to um support the development of below-market rate housing. So what we are intending to utilize these funds for is for the construction of downtown Madera. Veterans and family housing. The project cost is approximately twenty-five million. And it is to be located at two hundred and two hundred and four North Sea Street. And one hundred twenty-one and one twenty-five North Sea Street. This project will consist of two three-story buildings for a total of forty-eight residential units. What we are intending to utilize these funds are to process a loan. The city will be able to lend the grant amount to the downtown Madera Housing Associates. Which is a partner in the development of the project. And since it is a reimbursable grant, the city will provide such funds to the partner. Until the project is complete and city has been able to get reimbursement of the funds from the district. The partner, um the downtown Madera Housing and Associates will then repay the loan to the city. Um which will have a term of fifty-five years. So we won't see that reimbursed to the city until fifty-five years. However, um the grant funding will supplement um our accounts. And Mr. Uh we have somebody from Mr. Tim's um. I can't say his last name. Yakwa, and we'll speak on that a little bit more in just a minute. With that, the recommendation is to approve the execution of the funding agreement with the district and to approve the loan agreement. With our partner. I did want to turn it over to Mr. Tim, Tim, and um elaborate on the um the loan agreement. As well as help to answer additional questions.
Before we do that, Yvette, I'm gonna ask Ms. Montoy uh for um her comments.
Thank you, Mayor and and city council. Good evening. Um uh this has been a very quick project. I know it has been a very long project for the city council and for the city, but for uh Arnoldo and and me and Yvette and Roger, it's been a very. Uh uh quick project. Uh we actually, the city actually just received the the funding agreement from the district. In mid-June and the and the city requested some uh changes and tried to make it. Into an upfront loan rather than a uh reimbursement loan. And so at that time, uh so the district said they would take it into consideration. They did make a couple of tweaks, but last Wednesday, last Thursday, less than a week ago. Uh the district did send uh the agreement that's in your pocket as part of resolution number one uh on that agenda item. And uh it's still uh a reimbursement agreement. And so uh the developers have been very, very quickly, they they did not like the fact that it was going to be a reimbursement agreement. They would have liked the money upfront uh tomorrow, if you will. Uh however, they understand. Modified the agreement and so uh it's all all taken care of. So as she said, the first part of, the first resolution is to uh approve the grant agreement with the district. And then the second one is to approve the loan agreement. And you've got the late distribution. It is lengthy. There's lots of documents, lots of legalese. Uh in there uh and lots of exhibits. And in the course of putting everything together, apparently we found out very late today. That uh some of the exhibits were mis- mismarked. They're all there. Uh except the legal description wasn't there. We now have it. Mr. Shakwa sent it immediately upon learning that the city still needed that exhibit. All the other exhibits are there, but they're not marked. Uh they've not been marked as they should, so I just wanted to make a couple of corrections on the record. So that if you are inclined to proceed with approval of the loan agreement resolution. Uh that this is on the record and if you do uh make a motion that you would make the motion in light of the this recommendation. So first of all, uh the the second resolution is the one approving the loan agreement. And that, like I said, there are multiple exhibits there. So uh. The resolution in, uh if you wa- if you approve it, then uh the section two of the resolution. Uh should be amended to say the council approves the loan agreement with downtown Madera Housing Associates. As set forth in exhibit two A and related exhibits to B parentheses, the deed of trust and security agreement. Close parentheses and to C, the loan promissory note, which are all attached here too and incorporated by reference. And um we would also ask that that you authorize staff to go through all the exhibits and mark them correctly. Uh what happens too sometimes, for example, the funding agreement. Uh but is uh the attachment to the resolution number one, but it's also an attachment to resolution number two. So it got pretty lengthy and and a bit confusing, but it's all there. The other, the last thing I wanted to say is uh. Uh Ms. Ieta said that the the city would not need to supplement. The city's not using any city monies for this uh transaction. Uh the city is u- using zero monies and uh the city will, when it receive, when the project is completed in two years. And if all the requirements have been met, the city will disperse the money to uh. To the borrower and the district will disperse it to the city and then the city will disperse it to the borrower. Thank you.
But thank you for that clarification. Uh Mayor Potem Garcia has a question.
Yes, um um Hilda, if you may, um. Wouldn't it be better to wait until the document is fixed and all the points are made and corrected? For us to vote on?
I think.
City council meeting?
Generally, I would feel much better doing that, Mr. Garcia. However, I do understand that uh they are trying to close all of the myriad. Of actions and the developer can speak more to that. Uh I don't see these as as fatal. It's just more of a lining up the 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 numbering. Uh I think somebody went and marked the exhibits after they were submitted to the clerk's office. And put another exhibit number, but they they are all there. Uh the only one that was missing was the legal description and it is now there. So uh from a legal perspective, I feel comfortable and you know I'm very conservative and picky. However, um it's really a prerogative and you laugh, Mr. Garcia. Your prerogative, if you feel more comfortable to to really have it uh with every single I and T cross, not li- not after. Afterwards, but it re- before council acts. And uh with that, I'll turn it over uh to Mr. Shakwa. Unless you have another question.
Yes, yes. Well, 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 having said that, having said that. Uh how, i- if we did have to make the corrections, if 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 we said this as a city council, we would rather have a document clean. And to the point, uh how long that take?
I I could do it uh after the meeting tonight. I mean, it 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 just came up like at four thirty P M, at five thirty P M. Otherwise, I would have tried to take care of it and and get the numbering. A lot of it's got taken care of right now with what I read into the record. That's a key language for the resolution. And then, because the key language is now in the resolution that I've noted, and then uh when you look at the loan agreement. And the other two documents, they have exhibits and within their, within their uh the four four corners. So those will be easy to just attach. I, it's not a, it's not a really big problem, but we just wanted to make sure that you understood that that we were making these uh clarifications and corrections.
Thank you, Hilda. Before we move on to further discussion, why don't we hear from a Mr. Mr. Shakwa?
Thank you, uh Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. And council, I'm here on behalf of the Pacific. We do appreciate the vets and um Hilda's efforts with respect to this matter. But just, just to be clear, I think you understand, this is a grant from air quality to the city. this is a grant from Air Quality to the city on behalf of the housing project partnership. This is simply a pass-through. We're converting this from a grant to a loan because it's to the benefit of the limited partner investors. We can't declare grant money in basis, so we get less federal tax credits unless we convert them to a loan. And so we take all grants and convert them to loans, which is the state-of-the-art in tax credit development. So there's no money out from the city. We've agreed, we don't get anything until the project is completed. All of the bills and the audits are available for you and for the district. So I think really these are ministerial changes at the last moment due to some exhibit items. The lots have been combined. As you recall, there are two lots across the street from one another by the city, went on by the successor agency. Those lots have been optioned or sold directly to Moore's, who's a partner in this issue or in this. And those lots have now been combined in terms of APNs by city engineering. And so that was the hang-up with respect to changing the legal, which we now have. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, but I think this is a pretty straightforward item that Yvette and Hilda have handled.
Great, Mr. Shaka. Thank you very much for that. Any questions regarding this item of anyone, Yvette or Tim or Hilda? I'm sorry, Hilda, please go right ahead.
Thank you. I'll just add that, yes, it is basically a pass-through in the funding agreement between the city and the district. It doesn't, sometimes it'll describe general projects that that funding agreement describes this specific project. So it's intended, it goes to the city, but it's intended for the project.
Yeah, I can certainly understand the trepidation on some of council members' unwillingness to move forward unless we have everything. I totally get that. But I do believe in this particular case, it was only because of the last minute. And as part of what you wanted the amendment to read, Hilda, was to authorize staff to confirm those exhibits. That's really what we're doing, is just making sure that everything is as it's supposed to be. And I think, I think council can certainly trust in you as our city attorney to make sure that that gets done. But again, I'll leave it up to council on where we want to move forward with this particular item. Again, I think this is something that we should move with quickly. It is just a pass-through. There is no money out of the city's pocket. And I trust that our staff will move it forward. Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Dillon. Hilda, because you've read the, you've read that and you put it on record. Now, do we, can we just approve the resolutions as presented? Or do we need to add the additional language you had just stated?
For the first one, it's as written in the report. For the second one, on the loan agreement, you can just put "as amended per the city attorney's recommendation."
Perfect. So, and we're going to take these two separately, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, are you looking for a motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so I move to approve item D41 as presented.
Thank you.
There's a motion by Councilman Rodriguez and a second by Councilman Montes to approve item B4, Section 1. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution on item D42 with the amended verbiage or language that was added by our city legal counsel?
Thank you.
Again, it's been moved by Councilman Rodriguez and seconded by Councilman Robinson to approve item D42 with said.
Language.
Language. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for being with us. Moving on to administrative reports, item E1. This is the health of city finances. The recommendation on this is the financial analysis of major funds. Mr. Sanchez will be giving us this report.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this is Roger Sanchez, Director of Financial Services. I really appreciate the opportunity to present some financial information as it relates to the health of the city. This came as a request from Councilmember Rodriguez mainly, asking us to the debt of the city and the health of the city finances. So I will provide some information. This also comes in a timely manner as we're also looking into rate study, into Proposition 218, and other matters that are important and are due to the city. So there's a bit of information, and hopefully I will try to explain it in a user-friendly manner. By all means, if you have any questions on any time, let me know. So I will provide some introductions and definitions. It is a little bit of a complex topic. And we will look into, we will dive into the water fund. No pun intended there. So the sewer fund analysis, we will do solid waste, drainage, and also general fund and governmental funds analysis as well. So a lot of the cities are used to looking at the information in terms of revenues and expenditures. In essence, they look at the income of the organization. They look at the budget as far as projections in terms of, again, revenues and expenses and what is authorized by council and so on. But hardly do we look into the health and into the wealth of organization. And so we, we need to ask the question as to, do we have too much debt? Are we, are we charging too much money to our citizens? Do, how do we compare to other cities? And what is the burden to the citizens? Are we in good financial standing? So the statement of revenues and changes focuses more into, as I mentioned, into the daily, weekly, monthly, and annual operations of an organization. Whereas the statement of net position focuses on the wealth, on the assets, on the debt. And how much does the city own versus how much is it in debt? It focuses on capital improvement plans, on equipment. So, and there's a relationship between those two that, that affects one and the other and vice versa. So, for example, if we have a lot of debt, well, it affects the operations because we would have to be spending a good amount in interest expense. So high debt affects the operations. Or also, if we have high investments and we have interest income, it also affects the operations because we get increased revenues for our operations. On the other hand, if we, if we have revenues and expenses and we have leftover, it affects our wealth and our net position, our fund balance. So both of these affect each other. And that's an important point to make. Understanding the relationship is critical as to know how much debt we can get into and at what point is it harmful or healthy. So the statement of financial position as opposed to the statement of revenues and expenses, like, as I mentioned, it deals with how much we have in cash, on receivables, on equipment, how much we own on land and infrastructure. So, again, this is really the assets of the organization. And what are the assets? Really, they provide future economic benefit. That's what, that's what it does. And that's a big distinction as to getting income and spending on daily operations. Well, then the question is, how much of those assets are really owned by creditors? Or how much is owned by the city or the organization? So we have to ask that question. And that is at the heart of financial accounting. So the, the assets, we're going to be going through and answer the question, how much of our companies per se or within the water fund or the sewer fund, how much is its liabilities versus how much is it on net position or fund balance? So liabilities are future economic sacrifices. And one of the things that Mr. Councilmember Rodriguez asks, well, how much are we in debt? Or at least, as what I understood, and that's a key question. So one of the measurements is a debt-to-assets ratio, debt-to-assets ratio. And in essence, it gives, it says that for every $1 in assets, how much do we have in liabilities? So, for example, if we have $1 in assets and we have 70 cents in liabilities, that means that we have a 70% debt-to-asset ratio. And as a consequence, 30% on the net position. So that's, that's what the current equation does. It answers those questions. So within the water fund, I'd like to provide some historical context. I want to do some comparisons with other cities. And I like to answer the question as to, what is the debt per resident? And what is the revenue per resident? Really quick, again, as an example, within the water fund. Right now, at the end of fiscal year 1819, audit to financial statements, the water fund had $45 million in assets with a net position of $28.1 million and liabilities of $16.9 million. So the squares that you see represent the size. So those two combined are equal to our assets within the water fund. Therefore, our debt-to-asset ratio, if you get the $45 million with the, with the liabilities, then we have a 38% debt-to-asset ratio. And I believe this should have been the other way. Apologies for that. But it is 38% debt-to-asset ratio, meaning that 38% is liabilities on those $45 million in assets. That's what that means. Well, how do we, how do we even compare? What does that even mean? So what this, this is a historical context within the water fund. And this provides a spendable net position year after year within the water fund. That's what this information provides in millions of dollars each year. So again, this is on the net position side. And this section on the bottom provides the asset debt-to-asset ratio. So the 38% that you saw on the previous slide, that's on this year. And you can see year over year, how has it been in the past? So 38% is on liabilities of our assets. How do we stand compared to other cities? So the chart in green, again, is the same number for fiscal year 1819. The city of Madera is a 38%. And this is how we compare to other cities within the water fund. And this is the median within that. So we're slightly above the median, which is a 34% if we compare to the other neighboring cities. I would say that we're in good standing in terms of this debt-to-asset ratio. So the water fund, long-term liabilities per resident, and how do we compare to other cities? So what this tells us is that per resident, there's $214 of debt of long-term liabilities, I should say, and for this fiscal year. And so if we look at the median, we're below the median compared to other cities. Again, a good measurement, and you can see where the others stand. So we're in good position for the water fund. Now, the water fund, what is the average monthly revenue per resident? So I think this is a very important piece of information as well. So what this says is, on average, the water bill that we pay, the resident pays, is $15 per month. And we're right about the median compared to other cities. So we're charging a reasonable amount on the water fund. And again, if you look at the other, how much debt we have, it's reasonable compared to other cities. And also the charges are reasonable as well. On the sewer fund, same information as before. So again, this is the spendable net position year over year for the sewer fund. As you can see, we are chewing on our, on the spendable net position year after year. We're spending the money. And the debt-to-asset ratio is somewhat high. If you look, it's been increasing on the sewer fund. So we need to answer the questions. Are we charging a lot of money to customers? Are we not charging enough money? And how do we compare on this debt-to-asset ratio? How do we compare to other cities? So as you can see, on the sewer fund, again, we have a 60% on liabilities. And we're on the higher end compared to others. And if you can see, the medium is 37% on the sewer fund. Very different picture from the water fund. Now, what are the long-term liabilities per resident? Actually, we're, we're not bad on the, what is the long-term liabilities per resident on the sewer fund. And it looks like we're, on average, we charge about $11 per resident on a monthly basis for the sewer fund, for the sewer revenues. So we can see, this explains why we're chewing on the, on the net position. We have a higher debt than normal. A lot of it is because we're, the evidence shows clearly that we're not charging sufficient. We're one of the lowest, right next to the city of Hanford on the sewer charges. So a slight increase would fix those issues that we've, that we've seen before. Solid waste. Similar to the sewer fund, there's been a decrease on the spendable net position. there's been a decrease on the spendable net position. And here we have the debt to asset ratio. Solid waste, debt to asset ratio, and compared compared to the different cities. So we're right at the medium. And the long term liabilities per resident, we're at the lowest end on the solid waste. The average monthly revenue per resident, really, this is the cost to the customer and the revenue to the city is one in the same. So we're below the the median. Drainage Fund, there was very little comparison on the records that we that we found. So but the good news is that we almost have absolutely almost no debt whatsoever. That's the good news. We do have a very modest spendable net position. But we we seem to be managing. This is something that it could be looked at as part of the rate study as well. But really, no, no comparisons that we found. But I, what I can tell you is that the monthly average revenue per resident is a dollar and seven cents at Madera and three dollars and twenty seven cents at Hanford. So it's a modest income for the Drainage Fund, very, very modest. Now, the General Fund and governmental funds, so hopefully, I haven't lost you yet. I apologize if it's confusing. So the GASP, which they, it's a board in in the United States, and they create the rules of accounting for governmental entities and local governments. And in nineteen ninety nine, they came up with GASP thirty four. In essence, in the past, prior to that year, General Fund and government government funds, they would, if if they would acquire an asset, they would record it as an expenditure. And so we didn't know the wealth of cities back then or the liabilities back then. After nineteen ninety nine, the new rules required through GASP ninety nine, that they, that we had to report the assets, the long term assets and the long term liability. That was a huge change. This is, this has been the biggest change in governmental accounting. Now, the unfortunate thing is that it does it for all governmental funds. It combines them. So we cannot have information specifically for General Fund versus special revenue funds. It's all combined. So the health of the city in terms of governmental funds is combined, and we don't have other other choice. Nobody has that information. This is, we're following GASP rules. So how do we, how do we look historically? If you look at the spendable net position within the the governmental funds, it's been increasing, which is good news. If you look at this humongous jump, this is the introduction of GASP sixty eight. In essence, we recognize in this fist, between these two fiscal years, GASP sixty eight, all of a sudden said, well, you have to recognize the pension liabilities. You need to recognize those things. Before that, we we didn't recognize those liabilities. So this is exactly what happened is we began to record the pension liabilities. This is why you see this humongous jump on on the debt, on on long term liabilities. Other than that, it's been improving year over year. In other words, we've been, the revenues have exceeded the expenditures, and we have added to the spendable net position year over year. It looks like not super high, but it's been increasing. Well, you could be proud, council members, that Madera is in the debt to asset ratios within governmental funds is the lowest as comparable to the other ones. So good news for sure. The long term liabilities per residents were below the medium. So another good news. And in summary, if we look at the Water Fund, again, this is subject to review. And what I provided is eighteen nineteen and prior information. So we still are in the middle of of an audit for the new, for the nineteen twenty fiscal year, and it takes many months to close the books. But and also, we have a lot of incoming projects within the the Water Fund. So we're going to increase the debt, but we're, we also going to increase the assets in the future. So a lot of projects are coming up, but very healthy within the Water Fund at this point. The Sewer Fund, you notice that there were some signs. It's on a downward trend for the spendable net position. So somewhat, it needs attention. But at the same time, we're, the city is not charging sufficient compared to other cities. So the average monthly revenue per resident is low. Long term liabilities per resident, it's okay. The debt to asset ratio is on the high side. On the solid waste, it looks, it looks good across. We we do need to keep an eye on the spendable net position. It's on a downward trend. And so that needs to be addressed in in the near future with a proposition, proposition to eighteen. On the Drainage, there was limited information. The spendable net position is modest, but we were were able to cover the expenses with the revenues. The governmental funds, which is combined, it's on a healthy position. Healthy, even though we're, it's not a super rich city, but it's in a healthy position. But you know, the best way to, for me to describe it is, if if we have a a person like an engineer with an average income, that person could make wise investment and that person could create wealth if that person invests on a house, for example, and there's appreciation. On the other hand, we could have a wealthy person like as a brain surgeon who makes a lot of money, a lot of income, but doesn't invest wisely. So so what this is showing is that we are in good overall, in good financial health within the city. And that's the first thing I check. If I, if I'm interested in applying for city of Madera, that's the first thing I check is a balance sheet, a statement of net position. So I I knew right off the bat that it was in in a good position. So this analysis provides that insight, or hopefully, it provides some of that insight. There's other performance indicators, but the but the ones that I provided, it deals with the assets, with liabilities. And if we're changing, charging a reasonable amount, we're continuing to look into the rate study. And I also wanted to bring to your attention a website from the California State Auditor. And if I may, what it does is it provides, you can go in, and again, this is from the state, and you can look at the overall risk. You can look at different sections of liquidity if you if you have a lot of debt and and so on, different things. And once you, once you get into, then it provides a a map. So for example, the General Fund Reserves, it gives you a picture, a map that a green is a healthy for the city of Madera. It also provides some information as you hover over. And and you can see across the state which ones of the cities are in red in terms of of this topic for General Fund Reserves. Again, you can tell right away that Madera is on the green side. And this other example is on on the debt burden. And it provides that Madera is on the on the average side, whereas others jurisdictions are more in, they have higher debt. So you, again, you can see across, it's a good tool. So with that, if you if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer this, just was for your information.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez. Councilman Rodriguez has some comments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Dillon. Roger, first of all, I wanted to thank you for providing this comprehensive analysis of of the health, the the financial health of our of our city. And I'm sure you, that was the first thing you did is you probably went into that website to to look at our our financial health. And that's what made it easy for you. So thank you for sharing that with us. You know, one of the the reason why I I requested this and not only for the benefit of our of our community, but more so for the benefit of our council to to be able to see the 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 financial outlook of our community, not only with the increasing unfunded liability, but other costs that we have within those funds that you just showed us. I did have one question to ask you. I know that you shared a lot of the the median in regards and respect and respects to a lot of these communities and and cities. And when when it comes to the the debt to asset ratio, is there a particular percentage that we're looking at? And not so much comparison to other cities, but I noticed that on on certain certain funds there, we were up on a sixty seven percent, which is still not, not saying that it's super bad, but it's getting up there. That's just saying that we have more of an asset position that we do liabilities. But is there a specific percentage that you want to look at as an accountant with with respects to to a good, healthy, stable community or or fund?
Yes. The first thing, I I would be warning the council or the city manager, if we were borrowing money to fund the daily operations, that that's a big red flag. We we don't want to do that. We want the revenues to fund the daily operations. But that's not the case. You know, we're we're chewing through our reserves on the Sewer Fund as an example. But that's the first thing I look at. Now, in terms of getting into debt, if it's for capital projects and it's going to improve the future economic benefit of the city or the fund, it's not necessarily a bad thing. So in the private business, the way we do comparisons for that, Councilmember Rodriguez, is we do it by industry. So all the supermarkets, we do comparisons, or all of the airplane companies or the oil and gas companies. And we do various comparisons. And so we know exactly when debt is too high. Now, if at this point, we would have to do it on, we don't have that type of information for local governments. What we need to watch for is is the debt, is interest payments suffocating the operations? We need to ask the questions. In our case, that's not the case in any of the funds. Instead, is, it looks, in in the Sewer Fund, it looks like we're not charging sufficient to to keep up with, to fix, it's a quick fix. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a simple fix. If we, we don't even have to charge to the same level as the other cities or the medium in order to fix this problem. But at some point, we're going to get into the negative if we keep, if we keep with this trend. So we don't to what level do we want to keep at? It's not an easy answer because it's not an industry, it's a government. Instead, are we invested, are we investing in the community? Are we investing in building or infrastructure? Because we're addressing the growth of the city. And if we make those right, good projections, we should be healthy within the city, and we are healthy right now.
Thank you for that, Roger, sincerely. I think in in all of the presentations that I've had with respects to budget, I think this was a really well presented and comprehensive analysis of where we stand. You know, moving forward, I I hope this council would agree that we also do that when we look at our our development impact fees here in the future, so that we also can have somewhat of a breakdown of analysis if we are. And I think that's been brought to us before that we are on the lower end. And and therefore, there's a infrastructure that that is suffering, and and we're not collecting sufficient, not not to say that this is an adequate time to do so, but certainly something to to visit here in the future. But thank you again, Roger, appreciate the the presentation.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Fantastic insight, very transparent, easy to read, easy for anybody to follow. Any further discussion or direction? This is just an analysis and information for council this evening.
Just something to add, Mayor. If I can, thank you very much. As part of this process, one of the things that Roger and I have been discussing internally is, you know, what are some of the next steps to address some of the potential deficiencies that he's identified through his analysis? So as the council is very well aware, we 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 have begun the process of updating the development impact fee study for new development. And at the same time, the the item that we're also, it's on parallel tracks, but it's going to come after the fact, is we are, we started the process of identifying a a study for our fee rates for the community, which is commonly referred to as a proposition to a team study. So we are currently putting together a request for proposal. That item has not been daylighted, it's still in draft form. We've been talking about it for about two weeks now, as soon as the but, as soon as the council adopted the budget. I believe two days later, we had our meeting, and we started exploring different options. We've, and we started the process to identify what 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 budget items or what enterprise funds do we have to really take a hard look at? Because as Roger said, for the most part, we're in good shape right now. However, you always want to make sure you remain in good shape. You never want to get too far behind because that's when problems arise in your infrastructure. And those are things that we just kind of have as community leaders. We have to address any potential deficiencies kind that we have. And we also want to make sure that we're staying ahead of the curve. And and we try to become the leaders here in the valley, making sure that we're making sound fiscal decisions on behalf of our community. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just really quick.
Yes, please, right ahead.
One of the things when we have, when we're spending and we're reducing our our reserves on any particular fund, then we are not addressing the aging infrastructure potentially. For instance, if we have aging pipes and yet we're we're spending over the reserves, that could be an area that we need to be mindful of, that we need the little extra cushion because there's some older other homes, other communities, and the pipes could be corroding, or it could be time for a potential replacement. So just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And it's going to be an ongoing discussion, I'm sure. Any further discussion or questions? Great, thanks again very much, Mr. Sanchez, for that comprehensive report. Moving on to item D two, this is discussion and status on action taking with measures to mitigate COVID nineteen. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So earlier this evening, we heard from Public Health Director Sarah Boss, who provided an exhaustive overview of where our community stands when it comes to COVID nineteen. Here at the city of Madera, we continue to 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 remain closed for the public. However, we are still open. So if any community member does need assistance, our doors may be physically closed. However, we're available by phone, by email. We are still receiving payments. We have drop boxes right outside City Hall. So again, we are still open for business. We are still receiving payments. We have drop boxes right outside City Hall. So again, we are still open for business. We, for the most part, were fully staffed. However, a good part of our workforce continues to telecommute. Which we are reinforcing that because what? One of the things that Sarah had identified earlier today, unfortunately, some of our COVID positive cases have increased. And we want to make sure that we're protecting our employees. And at the same time, we want to make sure we're protecting our community members. As the community is very. As as both the community is aware and our staff is aware. When we have a line for people waiting to pay their utility bills. It's about protecting our community members because unfortunately, we do not have a very large area or a waiting area. So. When utility bills are due, we tend to accumulate a line. However, with that being said, we are not turning utilities off still. We are very cognizant and we're aware that some of our community members are struggling right now because of unemployment. And so we remain very cognizant of that. So again, if our community, if there is a need for a community member to reach out to the city, we are still available. We we've we've had zero disruptions in terms of our calls for service. I'm I'm sorry, in terms of responding for calls for service. From our police department, our fire department. We've had zero disruptions when it comes to our. To our water services in our sewer. So I do want to emphasize that to the community that though we are open for business. However, we respectfully request that our community. Just practice a little bit of patience with us right now because these are anxious times in our community. So with that, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Appreciate that. Any questions, comments, or input regarding this particular item or COVID nineteen pandemic? Right. Again, thank you very much for that update. We'll move on to council reports. And I'll start with Councilmember Robinson.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Councilwoman Gallegos.
I think you're apart.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Garcia.
Apologies, I pushed the wrong button.
Okay.
So yesterday was a lot of fun with Director General. Thank you to. Councilmember Montes and. City Manager Arnoldo for joining us. We had Supervisor Poitres and. Ed McIntyre from Madera Unified School District and members of the. It was good to see folks out there. I'm anxious to see what we're gonna, how we're gonna process the delivery of ten thousand masks and the and the hands, the gloves. To our residents. Think it's very timely, the fact that they made this gift to us. And I think we should utilize this as another way to. I guess that's telling me I should say enough.
Not at all. Sorry for the interruption. Please continue, Mayor Protem.
You know, I just wanted to say that I'm I'm anxious to see the process of how we distribute the these items to our community. So the I think the sooner the better right now. I just saw a message from Madera County Public Health. Asking us to do some a video saying why we wear the mask. I think that would be appropriate for us to get involved in that campaign. I think that would be good. Just like some of you did for the city of Madera. I think that would be a worthwhile project to do a video saying why we wear a mask. So everyone in the Garcia family wears a mask. We promote it and. And I think we should. That's a that's a good. So thank you very much there.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilman Holly.
I'm here. Oh, what I don't have nothing really to report, but I would like to see if we can bring back the idea of getting that sidewalk on I Street. And as well as finishing up the. Park over the. Rotary Park. Well, you know, doing finishing that curve, see what we can do about that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Councilman Rodriguez.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilman Montes.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I just wanted to let staff know, I really appreciate. All the effort they put into yesterday, and it was kind of short notice. And there was a lot of, I don't want to say back and forth, but really do appreciate it. All staff that came out for the photo ops. It really helps when we promote people wearing masks. Alicia, all the work you put in and Arnoldo, everything that you you guys have done. I really do appreciate you guys pulling it off on on short notice. So thank you.
I agree. I agree. Thank you all very, very much for that. And. Just to add to it, I I I think Sarah Sarah put it very, very plain. It it said, we have been, for the most part, compared to other cities, I've been doing our part. But I think we can do better. And it's been it's been said that it's just it's just the gatherings, the the mass gatherings. And although we all want to. Celebrate. Celebrate our nation's independence and and celebrate family and friends and Father's Day and so on, which is something we're accustomed to. It's just in our best interest to support one another and refrain from that so that we can continue to have businesses open. Practice safe distancing and please, please, please wear a mask anytime you're out in public. And I too want to thank Yvette and her team for our virtual ribbon cutting that we had last week for our transit facility. I know that was that was something that we could have just put off in 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 light of what's going on with COVID nineteen. And and Yvette and her team were very adamant that we continue to show the community and show others that we're moving forward with our beautiful transit facility. So. I think it went off fairly well. I want to thank Debbie Bray from the chamber and Councilman Jose Rodriguez for taking part. This is in his district. And and I think it was a lot of fun. And it even made the Channel thirty news. That was that was really cool as well. So thank you, Yvette, for all of your efforts in in doing so and showing the community that. Although we're in this pandemic, we're we're still moving forward here in the city of Madera, moving dirt, building buildings and getting things done. So thank you all very much for that. That's all I have. And I will ask Hilda for an announcement for closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a few items, but I don't think they'll take too long. First, we have G one conference with real property negotiators under Government Code five four nine five six point eight. And the property consists of seven parcels, APN zero zero eight one four three zero zero three. Zero zero eight one four three zero two one, zero zero eight one four three zero two oh, zero zero eight one four three zero one nine. Zero zero eight one four three zero one eight. Zero zero eight one four three zero zero one and zero zero seven one four two zero zero one. Agency negotiator is Arnoldo Rodriguez. The negotiating party is Rick Amerin. Under negotiation are the price and terms. Then we have some litigation conference with legal counsel, existing litigation under Government Code five four nine five six point nine. One is Ronald Dawson versus City of Madera. And two is JHS Family Limited Partnership versus City Administrator of the City of Madera. At three, we have conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation initiation of litigation under Government Code five four nine five six point nine C. City of Madera versus Ashmere Singh, Kamaljit Kaur, and First Transit Inc. Conference with labor negotiators under Government Section five four nine five seven point six, agency representative is Mayor Medehin. Unrepresented employee is city manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hilda, for all those joining us this evening. Thank you also very, very much. Enjoy your Fourth of July weekend. Be safe. And we'll take a quick two minute break and we will just have those in closed session on the screen next. Thank you.
The city council met in close session, all members were present to consider the items on the agenda. There is one report of election and it concerns a decision by the council, unanimous council decision, to file a complaint against Kamaljit Kaur, Anjir Singh and First Transit Inc. for damages incurred by the city as a result of a motor vehicle accident that occurred on August 24, 2018. Thank you.
Hilda, thank you very much. Thank you to all my colleagues and everybody watching. We hope you have a very safe and wonderful Fourth of July weekend. Wear a mask when you're in public. Thank you everybody. Good night.
Good night.